Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Fenobia Dallas, the Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. The public comment agenda item allows the public to speak to the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the Secretary for the record. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general or specific questions, and those questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. The purpose of a public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of the relevant hearing and not speak on other topics. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval in which you are interested is called, please be prepared to speak. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the Secretary for the record. The applicant whose application is the subject of the public hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. Again, those speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole and not to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the hearing will be limited to three minutes. Speakers may only speak once on that hearing. This meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendation on all petitions made by the Planning Commission are then forwarded to City Council for disposition. Are there any questions about these instructions? Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Brayley?
Present.
Commissioner Zorco? Commissioner Dallas?
Present.
Commissioner Hanley?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Nash?
Present.
Commissioner Ostas?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from July 27, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from July 27, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Again, the public comment allows the public to speak to the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. This is not the public comment section where we talk about public hearing issues. If you have any general remarks that you want to address to the Commission, you may do so at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
I'm not sure if it is the right time to bring this up. It's in reference to a request that's going to happen.
One of the site plan approvals?
Yes.
Then that's part of the public hearing process, and you're right.
Speak now?
That will come a little bit later.
Okay, excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any general public comments they wish to make to the Commission? Hearing none, we move to the next item on our agenda. We will begin with our new business. The first item on our new business is a public hearing, so we will now begin the public hearing for the specific case J-21-0091 to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2225 East Genesee. Again, the purpose of a public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of the hearing and not other topics. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole and not to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. The applicant whose application is the subject of the hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of this public hearing will be limited to three minutes. When you are recognized, please state your name and address for the record. Is the applicant or a representative present?
Yes. Good evening. My name is John Maury with D&amp;M Site Surveying and Engineering here in Saginaw, and I am representing my client, Duane Amos, here with this development. The site is located at 2225 East Genesee in the city of Saginaw. It's two lots in South Park Edition, lots 40 and 41. The parcel size is roughly 83 feet wide by 130 feet deep, approximately 2/10 of an acre, and the property is currently zoned B1. It is, we are asking for this transition, it's retail to retail. It's an existing one-story wood-framed building that was a previous barber shop. The area of this building is 970 square feet with a 460-foot, square-foot garage behind it. The site plan is here in front of you. The parking requirements is one to every 250 square feet, or six total parking spaces required. Site is currently serviced by all the utilities, sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer. In this development, we will be adding, obviously, existing storm sewer, and we will be tapping into the sewer on Roberts Street to avoid digging up East Genesee. The property is fenced and landscaped. Currently, we have, this property is right across the street from the old Delphi plant on Genesee that has been demoed. We have a business to the north, a business to the south, and a residential house to the west. The site plan that we have, obviously, we are a little tight in here. We're going to utilize the existing curb cut on Genesee Street, which basically saved us from digging up the nice new sidewalk and the streetscape that the city did, and we will have one-way traffic that exits to Roberts Street, so it'll circle the property and come out with an exit on Roberts Street. The stormwater detention requirements, we're going to meet all those in the actual storm sewer pipe itself. We have enough volume that that's going to be our storm storage, and then, like I said, it's going to discharge into Roberts Street, the combined sewer on Roberts. Pretty easy site, small site, but we've met all the requirements per the city, and I can answer any questions that you guys have in relation to the engineering of this.
I got first.
We can answer your questions. We can answer your questions after the public hearing is closed.
Let me get this out of the way so you can see how we're public.
Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2225 East Genesee. Please state your name and address.
Is it okay if I pull this down? Good evening. My name is Angel Bush, and I am at 1600 Springwoods Plaza Drive, Spring, Texas. I am here all the way from Houston, Texas, to oppose this special land use. And why am I here? I used to live here. I attended Heaven Ridge Central Junior High, Saginaw High School. I attended Central Michigan University. So I am from here, I have family here, and from the information that I've learned, there are 19 registered drug facilities here in the city of Saginaw, which equates to, according to the census, about 2,900, one registered drug facility to every 2,900 people. It is time that we put the city of Saginaw first. It is time that we do the diligence as we create our master plans, as we determine how we're going to spend upwards of $50 million to make this city better. There is hope in Saginaw, and I came all the way from Houston to let you know that there are those of us who have moved but are willing and ready and able to move back. I'm invested in this community. I have purchased 22 lots in the city, so for those who are wondering what is there about this, why did I travel all the way from Houston, Texas, to be here? It is because I care about this community. And again, I'm going to talk about 11 minutes. Out of the 19 registered drug facilities, there are seven registered drug facilities within four-mile radius. It would take me 11 minutes to drive to all seven registered drug facilities. It takes us more than 11 minutes to get our hair done. It takes us more than 11 minutes to mow our lawns. It takes us more than 11 minutes to get our nails done. It takes us more than 11 minutes to find parking. It takes us more than 11 minutes to get to our jobs. And yet, we continue to build more registered drug facilities. When I was younger, people argued about how many liquor stores were on the corners in certain neighborhoods, and now the question will be, how many registered drug facilities can this city handle that will be on the corners of our neighborhoods? It is time that we stand up for this city, the city of Saginaw. Thank you, guys, so much for listening.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ebony Turner. I reside at 3341 Oslers, Saginaw, Michigan. I stand before you to read a letter written by Mr. Terry Pruitt on behalf of Mr. Amos. This letter is in support of your efforts to further your entrepreneurial goals through securing a retail outlet as part of the State of Michigan Marijuana and Social Equity Program. Within the past year, Saginaw City Council has approved the establishments and awarding of license this type of retail establishment in the city that meet the state and local requirements. Consistent with this decision, I feel strongly that the awarding of the license must also reflect equality, race, gender, and support the local residents' desire to operate a business. As a civic leader in your community, I understand that there has been considerable amount of consternation regarding this type of business expansion in the community. However, since the citizens of this state have made the determination and city officials have given a go-ahead, I feel it is critically important that local residents be given a fair opportunity to participate and succeed in this type of venture. I wish you much success as you move forward. Thanks.
Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on this case?
Good evening. My name is Teresa Stitt. I live at 3320 East Genesee in the city of Saginaw, and I'm here on the behalf of the Fairground Neighborhood Association and with several members from that association. We want to go on record as being in opposition to a marijuana retail store at 2225 East Genesee Avenue. We also want it noted that we are not protesting the legalization of marijuana, but the locations of some of the stores and the growers. If you would bear with me, last month I asked you to drive through the territory, but I wish you had your map so you can just see what we see. The Fairground Neighborhood Association, south border is Hess Street, the east border is back over to 23rd Street, the west border is the train track just behind Saginaw High School. The north border is East Harlem Avenue. I give you those coordinates so that you can create a visual, or you can just say, "Yeah, I got it. I know where southeast Saginaw is." But I want you to see why we're feeling a little distressed in that neighborhood. Currently, at our north border, there is approval for 2401 East Harlem, a second store, 2744 East Harlem, a third grower comes right up in our community at 1504 Cumberland, a fourth retail store at 1843 East Genesee, a fifth grower at 1705 Boxwood, and a sixth store at 2219 Weber Street. Now, while that may be a little distance away, a little distance from Saginaw High School, but Francis Ray Academy is right up in that community. So approving a store at 2225 gives two locations in walking distance of Jesse Loomis Elementary School. This community do not have a park, a sports field, a playground, there's no grocery store, no bank, not even a community police officer to support and share information with the Neighborhood Association. We're asking you to please do not put another marijuana store into our small neighborhood. We can't survive in an area that has an abundance of dollar stores, liquor stores, and marijuana stores. So what we're asking is that your economic development plan for our community be something life-sustaining, not something that will make us want to move and abandon our property. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on this case?
Yes. Hello. My name is Kenya Kendall. I live at 827 Athens in Saginaw, Michigan. I have been born and raised in Saginaw my whole life, and I come in saying that I hope you do approve of this facility being open. Not only is he just a local man trying to open a business here and expand, he is going to be putting back into the community. He's not taking it away from Saginaw, he's keeping it in Saginaw, which is, I travel. I've seen these facilities open through various states, and a lot of them are not local. And that's the one great thing about this, is that he is a local man. He has been here in this community, same as majority of us. He knows this community. He's not an outsider coming in, and that's why I think this facility is a great opportunity for us, a great opportunity to keep it within our community, keep it local. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case?
Hi, my name is Carolyn Moore. I live at number nine Jefferson Court, and I'm here to represent Mr. Dark Amos with his adventure with the marijuana store. I know times have changed, this is 2021.
Could you speak into the microphone?
I know times have changed, and it's 2021, and he'd been here all his life, like the young lady said. I think this store would be great for the community, keeping them, young people to go buy illegal drugs, they can go in there and go ahead and purchase something and pay taxes on it instead of doing it illegal, and then you catch someone, you got to pay more taxes, and we got to pay taxes to keep people in prison for doing things that they don't supposed to do. So I'm representing him today for his business. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this case?
Hello. My name is Charlene Washington. I live at 1405 Brown Street. I was here the last time that you convened, and I would just like to reiterate some things. I would say that it does seem unfair that someone local can get in on the business of all this money that's to be made, I get that, and I'm very sorry that that's his choice of business. But there are, as Mrs. Stitt said, there are too many growers, there are too many marijuana dispensaries in our community, and we can't stop the 19 that you approved already. We would have been here in numbers had we known that you were going to approve those 19 stores, but we weren't, because we didn't know. We would have been here. But we can stop or slow down the expansion of the marijuana industry, and on Genesee, at least on Genesee Street. We just don't want another store. We don't want another marijuana dispensary, whether it's retail to retail, whether it's a grower, no matter what it is, we don't want another one on East Genesee Avenue. Again, as I said before, we love our city, we're praying for our city every single day, asking God to transform our city into a place where businesses would want to come, that would hire people to have real jobs. We want businesses that will build our community and not continue to tear it down. So we're looking, and I'm very sorry that this young man has chosen this business for his business, because it is just another problem for us in our city. It's nothing against him or anyone else, we just don't want that many stores. We can't stop the 19 that have been already approved, but we can't stand up and have a voice to say that we're not pleased, and we are, as a community, we are not pleased to have another grower, not another retail-to-retail store, not another dispensary, not anything concerning the marijuana sales in our community. Our people are broken already. Our people are hopeless already, and marijuana is not, everybody is, I'm not, look, I can't speak to who needs, because I'm not a doctor, I don't know who needs what, but I do know that with, and I appreciate the young lady from Texas saying that, for every 2,900 people we have a store, there's no need for that. Please help us build our city. You're the city planners. Help us build our city, help us transform our city by not allowing things that are going to pull the people down. You cannot build a community until you build the people. This is not going to build a community. It's going to further destroy our community, drugs, alcohol, the crime, everything else. It all feeds into that same situation. Please do not approve another grower, not another dispensary, retail-to-retail, whatever it is. Please approve another business for our city. We want our city to thrive, and I know that it's a long shot, I know you guys have a master plan, I know that you do, that's fine, but maybe you need to revisit that plan, and I'm asking you to revisit that plan, and consider that you cannot build a community until you build the people. Try building the people, and you'll get lots of support for that.
Anyone else want to comment on this case?
Good evening. My name is Duane Amos, and as I come before you for a dark use permit, it becomes difficult at times, because I understand what the community is saying. I've been there. I've been on both sides. I'm in the Social Equity Program right now. That's a program in the state of Michigan which goes through 183 counties in our state. It's to give back to disproportionate communities through our state for the war on drugs, particularly marijuana. A lot of people seem to think that marijuana is a bad thing right now, but these aren't the times of the '40s, the '50s, the '60s. These are the '20s, the '21s, the '22s. We have different things that's going on today. Marijuana helps with a lot of things when a person is sick. When you have arthritis, you can use marijuana now. You can use CBD oils and things like that, such. And then, when it comes to the revenue, revenue helps our community. There's not one time that anybody would not be able to come to my door and say, "What can you do for us when we don't have?" My door will always be open for anything, just like it always have. I've always given back to our community. I was brought up in First War Community Center. For all those of you that don't know, I was brought up in First War Community Center, where the struggle was very hard. We went through the days when we had Reuben Daniels and Willie Thompson. Those days were way better back then than they are today. Our kids today don't have that much for them to look forward to, but one thing they can look forward to is a mentor. I have mentored a lot of these kids that's out here that's grown today. A lot of the basketball players, the pro players, a lot of them, I have mentored, and I was mentored. I was mentored by Azola Williams. That's who brought me up through here. They showed me the right way how to do this. This facility will have 24 cameras, a vault room, it will have a security guard, 24-hour alarm system, and I understand a lot of concerns with, a lot of people would think that it's going to bring a lot of destruction. No, that's what it's going to do. It's just as much as secure as a bank is. And what we're going to do, if we are allowed to, we're going to get back to our community in great numbers and great volumes. We want the community, the neighborhoods, to know that they are safe, and we are willing to give them anything that they need to make sure that the next generation of kids get a great opportunity. But we also want them to know one thing, too: This business isn't one-sided. This business is for everybody.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Reeves, and I live at 16 Redwood, Saginaw, Michigan. And again, I oppose it. I live a block away from Inez Barber Shop, where he's talking about opening up the marijuana store. I live less than a block from Jesse Lewis. Our children, a lot of our children learn by sight, some learn by what they hear. Those children will constantly go by the marijuana store. And what will our children be saying? This is the elementary school. That's the marijuana store. That's where you go to get marijuana. That's what our children will be saying. They will be constantly seeing the in and out of people going inside that store. Can we have a grocery store where our children can have the opportunity to get a fresh apple, a fresh banana, fresh fruit, not fresh marijuana? Again, I oppose it. This is not what we need. As she said, there are 20 of them in the Saginaw area, and I know they're not all on the east side, they're also on the west side, but our children will be less than a block from where that store will be, and they will pass by it constantly. Thank you.
I'm sorry I missed your name.
My name is Rosemary Reeves. I live at 16 Redwood Drive.
Thank you.
My name is Azola Williams, and I've been in this community practically all my life.
Can you give us your address, please?
My address is 3204 Lexington Drive. Also, I've worked at First War for 40 years, so I had a chance to work with kids of all natures. Also, I'm speaking in behalf of Duane Amos. I used to tell him when he was growing up, "If you're going to do a business, do it right." And I just want to support him, because we don't let so many in this neighborhood that hasn't put anything back or tried to help, or tried to help or give, it hasn't happened. So he's one of the products from Saginaw. I support him. He needs a chance. Give him a chance to become entrepreneur. So I've always talked to him about that, and he was sincere about it, so I'm just here supporting him. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment on this case?
Madam Chairman, I have one letter that I received that I would like to read. Concerns regarding granting special use permit application to allow the opening of a marijuana dispensary at 2225 East Genesee. I'm concerned about the granting of the request for the special use permit application to allow the opening of a marijuana dispensary at 2225 East Genesee for the following reasons: That the appropriate security measures be implemented to prevent theft of product and money to ensure the safety of the business, residents, and close proximity to dispensary to protect minors who live and play in the area of the dispensary. There is a need for the use of armed security guards. Number two, the hours that business will be open. Number three, the patrons of the business will only park in parking lot designation, designated for the business, there should be fencing installed to separate and close the property. How the dispensary will affect the traffic in the area. Five, use Five, use, use of marijuana and marijuana products in the parking lot. Number six, loitering. My business has been located at 2215 East Genesee since 1996, and since COVID, I meet with clients in the parking lot to perform functions, including but not limited to execution of documents. Clients also stop by my office at various times of the day and evening in order to drop off paperwork in the drop slot on the side of the building. They need to continue to feed, feel safe when performing these kinds of activities, whether it's during the day, at night, on weekdays, or on weekends. Sincerely, Gina Amos. And she gives a post office box.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on case number J 21 0091? Site plan review for special use marijuana retail establishment at 2225 East Genesee. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioners, you may now ask your questions of our appellate, if you have any questions.
I do. I do. You talked about Mr. Ames, I think I'm saying it right, Mr. Amos. He indicated 24 hour security.
Move your microphone up, please, a little bit.
Mr. Amos, he recognized that he was going to have 24 hour security plus cameras. Is the area fenced in? I, I know I've been past it, and I know where it is. The back part?
Is fenced in the back.
And so, how many square feet did you say this was again, sir?
The property or the building itself?
The, the building itself.
The building itself is only 970 square feet. The garage is 459 square.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions, some commissioners?
I do. I've got a question. So you were talking about the, the inside of the building is like a vault, like a bank. Can you explain what you meant by that security or that leverage that you are using inside the facility?
Well, uh, with 24, with 24 cameras, 16 rooms inside, um, you have to have a vault, opposed to just like you have to have a security guard that's sitting in the station that stays there at all time. So everything up in there, there will be no blind spots in the inside.
Okay. So when you walk into the facility, basically you just see the person that waits on you?
Yes.
And there's a counter?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking you this is because I already know the answers to the question, but I want everybody in the audience to hear the que, to hear the answers to your questions. If you've never been to one of these facilities before, it's exactly what this gentleman is talking about. These are highly secure facilities, and we don't have people coming in and out of the facilities all of the time. I've actually sat in front of a dispensary just to see the traffic that goes in and out. So, I'm, again, I'm trying to alleviate some of the concerns of the audience. Thank you.
Any other questions, some commissioners?
I have a question for staff. How many licenses have actually been, been given out or taken off?
No business licenses have been given out as of yet.
Is it, but they've been applied for them, correct?
Yeah, they have to follow a process, and they have to get a certificate of occupancy and also state approval. Once it's completed, then they can apply for the, or get, receive a business license from the clerk's office.
Correct. How many special use permits?
Follow-up question, how many have been approved for that? Your point right there.
So as mentioned, there's 19.
19.
Have been approved. Two of them are grow operations.
Okay. Thank you.
So 17 retail.
There you go.
Thank you.
I have a question.
So, Madam Chair, so with that being said, although we did 19, we've only got two that's moving forward. Is that what you're telling me? What do you say?
They're all moving forward. It's just that there are different phases of, of the process.
So just for clarification, Bob, just for help, so zero full business licenses have been issued. So there is presently no operational marijuana establishment in the city of Saginaw.
Correct.
Okay. 19 special use permits have been approved by this body.
Correct.
And then of those 19 special use permits, many of them have applied for the business license with the city clerk. And do you know the number that have issued provisional licenses by the city clerk?
Uh, I, I do not know how many provisional licenses have been.
Presumably somewhere between 0 and 19 probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that provisional license again is not, does not allow for operation.
Correct.
To be fair, to be fair though, I'm sorry.
We had a question here.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to tag on to what the attorney's talking about, and just for the folks that are in the audience. So the process where these folks are at with the 19 that have been approved, and what our planners are telling you is that if they have a provisioning license that's been issued, that provisioning license is good for one year, which means that they have to actually get to, through engineering approval. Once they have engineering approval, then they can start their build. Once they're done with their build, then they're going to go to the state of Michigan, and the state of Michigan has to issue their license contingent that they get a certificate of occupancy. Now, if all of that takes place, then they come back to the city clerk's office here in Saginaw, and they'll get their business license to fully operate in the city of Saginaw. So it's a pretty long process. The process could actually fail in the middle somewhere down the line, but we don't know. It sounds like most of them are in engineering correctly right now, but, and you don't, and you don't know the PLs that are issued right now, so that's just another.
Uh, there's one on State Street that's been issued the certificate of occupancy, but it's, I'm told that it takes approximately three weeks for the state to come in, and it's, so that might probably be the first one.
Okay. And so for the folks in the, what he's talking about there, we've got one that's probably going to open, that'd be our first one if everything goes right. Okay.
So to be fair to your point, Bill, what happens if I'm 90% complete, I'm bumping up against my one year? What do I do with the city to buy a little more time? Because I think you know the answer to that.
The assumption would be that we would go back to the clerk's office and ask for an extension, because something could have happened during the process where you might have had plumbing issues, or you run into issues with your parking lot and drain stewers and stuff like that. Am I not correct? Thank you. Yep.
So that could be another situation where you could be granted some more time to finish it out, which you plan to do.
You might need another month, you might need another six months, correct?
Okay.
Depending, depending on your situation.
But just to be transparent with the group.
And that's what I'm trying to do too, because this is a highly sensitive topic.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions, some commissioners?
And get, uh, this is for staff with the, with the 19. We break it down east side, west side. Majority, I think, are on the west side, correct?
Uh, at this point, it's probably close to half and half.
Fifty, fifty.
Any other questions, some commissioners? Do I have a motion on this special use permit?
Don't we have to close discussion?
I'm sorry.
Don't we have to close discussion? No?
We can close this. Do I have a motion on special use permit?
I make a motion for special use permit J 21 0091 for approval.
Members, there needs to be a second so we can vote on it.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve case J 21 0091, special use permit for marijuana retail establishment at 2225 East Genesee. Madam Secretary, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Brayley.
Approve.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hamley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
No.
Commissioner O stash.
Yes.
Motion was approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for case J 21 0092, to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2348 South Michigan. Is the applicant or representative present?
Ms. Dabb, give her a name. That would be standing to me.
Is there a representative or applicant present for case J 21 0092?
Ellen?
It's just.
Yes. I am.
Okay, again, John Mori with DNM Site Surveying and Engineering here in Saginaw. This site, 2348 South Michigan Avenue, um, this site was previously approved back in March under a different retailer, um, and, uh, who has since relinquished his special use permit to this new group. Again, this site is Zone B1. The lot size is 100 feet by 110 feet, approximately a quarter of an acre. This building was built in 1914 here on the south side. The existing building is 40 by 60, right next to, um, oh, uh, South Michigan Avenue, I guess, uh, almost a common wall with, um, with Rog's Bar, I guess, is, would be the old Trogan's Grocery Store, um, down there on the south end. Again, the parking requirements have been met. We've, we've already gone through, uh, the engineering department with this, with this site and, uh, met all the engineering requirements of it. And again, this, um, the engineering aspect of it is kind of a moot point. It's actually a special use permit for, um, a new, um, a new developer, I guess to say, and that is this NH Ventures out of Brighton, Michigan. So I can go over the engineering again with you, if you guys need to. I can go through the whole, my whole spiel if you want, but again, this site was already approved once, and it's just a transfer to a new entity.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case, J 21 dash 0092, to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2348 South Michigan? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Ben Hines. I live at 985 South Graham Road, Saginaw, Michigan, 48609. I own, uh, 10 properties within the city of Saginaw. One of them is Rog's Bar, which is right next to the building that, uh, this is proposed I'm not really speaking in favor or against it, probably more in favor because the city needs help. I know that. I, I grew up here. I, I know what the taxes are on some of these marijuana facilities, and some people want to pay them taxes, and the city wants to collect them. More power to them, is the way I look at it. My only concern is, uh, you hear a lot of rumors with this. My building is almost, there's a small gap between my building and the building they're talking about. And, uh, I was wondering, is that building going to stay in the same footprint it is? Or are they tearing that building down like they did, uh, Zorba's and start from scratch? Because I don't know, when they take that building down, uh...
Just, just, please, excuse me, hang, hang on a second. Let him ask, ask his question, and then I would like for you to come to the podium and respond to the question. Okay? All right.
Okay, well, I was wondering about, if they tear down that building, and then my, my building that sort of like a butt to theirs, they tear theirs down, I don't know what that wall's going to look like. It's been there for probably about 1914, whatever he talked about. And I'm concerned, like, he tears that down, and I got this thing that looks like the one down on Genesee that's falling apart in the road, you know? I, I, times are tough pandemic. I don't need to spend 20 or $30,000 to make the outside of my building look pretty. I'd, I'd love to have it looked that way, but, uh, that's, that's one of my concerns. The other one is parking. Uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of traffic there, and somebody in their infinite wisdom took out the light to the left of me down there that comes around the curve. They come around that curve, they're moving, and there's kids going to school, and this is going to generate more traffic. I'd like for someone to consider putting that light back up down there to slow the traffic down. And then when the city went and re-blacktopped, uh, South Michigan in front of my place, I liked that, but you know what it did? Raised a mile per hour, well, 10 miles per hour, because they're not beating their cars up going by there anymore. You know, I mean, that's, that's what happened. So I'm not against these guys doing what they want to do, and, uh, you know, they're, you know, they're investing in the city of Saginaw too, because, uh, I usually do my homework, and I know these guys, uh, have invested in Saginaw, just like they know I have.
Five, three minutes.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Right, can you now address it?
I was going to say, point of order, Chair, this being a public hearing, Mr. Mori has already spoken, he cannot speak again. Questions can be posed to him as the representative of the applicant after the public.
Thank you, Attorney Lewis. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case, J 21 0092?
Hello, my name is Pasquale Choa Jr. I live at 2343 South Hamilton. I live right in back of where they're going to build that building, and I'm just concerned, is that building going to go all the way across the fence line in the back?
You can't answer questions.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Um, I mean, because if, if that's the case, I don't know how tall that building's going to be. I'm going to be looking at a building when I, when I open my door and look out the back of my yard, you know, I don't know what's, uh, what kind of security, what's going on. Uh, I've lived there all my life, my parents lived there, I bought two lot, I bought the lot next door to me. So I'm not against it, and, but I just, I'm just concerned about what's, uh, what the picture's going to look like. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case, J 21 0092, special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2348 South Michigan? You may comment on this separate case, yes.
Again, my name is Angel Bush, 1600 Springwood Plaza Drive, Spring, Texas. I just wanted to clarify some things in terms of the registered drug facilities.
Could you pull the microphone down just a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. My, my hope is that at some point in the future, as you are creating a master plan, that the registered drug facilities is not a part of the master plan. Um, and the reason that I say this, for those who are not aware, I am investing in Saginaw. Again, I purchased 22 lots. I'm the founder of Black Women in Artificial Intelligence, and we are building an innovation lab in the city of Saginaw. So you will see me before you at some point in the future. So I don't want people to think, oh, she's just an outsider coming in. Again, I attended Edith Bailey, Century Junior High School, Saginaw High School, and at some point in my lifetime, all of these schools will be shut down. Consider that. You have more registered drug facilities than you have major grocery stores. Think about what you are doing to this community. We understand exactly everything that you guys have explained. I understand the security, I understand all of these things, but I also understand that we're the ones who have to live next to it.
Are you referring to the case?
I'm, I'm talking about this case because...
J 21 0092?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
2348 South Michigan?
Yes, because there are residents that live in that area. And I'm not speaking just for one area, I'm speaking for the whole city of Saginaw. You have been entrusted, and I believe in you, I actually watch you on YouTube. So again, I've done a little bit of my homework. I understand that you're a numbers person. I've done a little bit of my homework on this. And again, now we have 20 registered drug... And again, now we have 20 registered drug facilities in the city of Saginaw. According to the census, there were 48,000 people in the city of Saginaw. Understand those numbers when we're talking about one registered drug facility. It is time to use some of those $50 million. It's time in the master's plan that you guys are coming up with to do a study, to command the study be done on how it will affect communities of this size. I'm not talking about Houston. I'm not talking about other cities that are 10 times the size of this city. 48,000 people, one registered drug facility for every 2,900 people. Let's talk about it, let's make Saginaw better. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? J 21-0092, 2348 South Michigan. Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Support.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. Commissioners, it's your opportunity to ask questions of our presenter.
Chair, just another point of order, I think you need to have the motion on the table with a second and then discussion.
I'm sorry, I did not bring the motion back to the table. Thank you again, Attorney Lewis. Is there a motion for case J 21-0092?
Motion for case J 21-0092 to approve special use permit.
Support.
It has been moved and seconded to approve case J 21-0092, to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2348 South Michigan. Now, Commissioners, do you have any questions or would you like to be enlightened on any topic?
I do. Can I ask the question that the young man asked? Because I want to know that too.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
That's why you're.
The body, forget you, the bodies next door, they was concerned, is they going to tear his wall down?
I apologize for being too short with my presentation with trying to answer some of the questions that we had coming in here. Building stays, building stays. The parking lot basically is getting redone to meet new ordinance for these marijuana establishments. We have to go in there and rebuild this existing parking lot in the same spot. There will be an eight-foot fence around this property, okay? So that will screen the properties to the rear and also to the fence coming around the northerly side of that property. So the building stays, the wall should be supported. And, you know, the eight-foot fence should block any movement even inside of that to all the residents.
Question.
So John, just to be clear, the building stays, the fence is up, but there's no additional building on the existing building that will? Back to the gentleman's question, he was worried about additional building, build out, that's not happening.
John, so basically, this is the same thing that we saw before, it's just change of paperwork. Nothing's changed as far as this.
Actually, the owner of the building is the same. Mr. Singh here is the owner, he purchased this property and then the first tenant, obviously, has decided to relinquish his special use permit. And that's why I'm back in front of you, because you have to come back to get that special use permit.
Because the special use permit stays with the entity. That's gone.
There's no function to transfer.
Yeah, that's a problem. That's a legal term, right?
John, I'm looking at the plans too. Is the same security systems being put into place that the state requires?
Correct.
It's been through our police department and everything's approved? Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, hearing none. It has been moved and seconded to approve case J 21-0092, to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2348 South Michigan. Madam Secretary, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Brayley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Commissioner Oystash?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for case J 21-0093, to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2030 North Mason. Is the applicant or a representative present? And you may state your name and address again for the record.
Okay, again, John Maury with D and M Site here in Saginaw. This is the old 711 site at 2030 North Mason Street, the corner of State and Mason. It is Lot 7 and 8 of Penoir Farm subdivision. The property is 120 by 124 feet. It was the former 711 and then after that it had another, had a couple other retail establishments that tried to give it a go in there. The total square footage of this building, 3,800 square feet. And the parking requirement, again, one in every 250 square feet for 17 parking spots. We are, we do have MDOT approval for a new curb cut on State Street. It will also have that entrance off of the one-way off of Mason. The existing facility, it's serviced by water, sewer, and sanitary. The only thing that we really had to do on this site was, other than rebuild the parking lot in the same spot, was meet the city of Saginaw's stormwater requirements. And we're doing that with some above-ground storage in the parking lot with an outlet control structure out into the sewer on Mason Street. There will be fence screening around the facility as well as landscaping. We are cutting a little bit of the parking lot out to get a little greenery in the corner. Other than that, it's the same owner, Mr. Singh. And it's the same group, Skylabs is coming in. And again, they go through all the state requirements for the security systems. And like Mr. Amos said, you know, these facilities are just as secure as a bank. So I can answer any questions that you guys have on this site, if you have any. Again, this site was previously approved and we're just transferring our special use permit on this one again.
Is there anyone who would like to comment on this case?
I'm all the way from Texas.
Yes. I will not be moved because I respect the people who stand before me and I respect everyone here who is living in these communities. And I know you do as well. And so I will continue to stand up and it may do to no avail to anyone on this stand. But again, I respect each and every one of you and what you're trying to do for this city. But I have to say it, and some of you have heard this before, all money is not good money. So I understand that you'll get tax revenue and things of that nature and I'm not saying that's why you're voting for this. But it's clear that the community is saying no to this. Businesses are being told yes, but the community is being told no. Over 20 times, they've been told no. And they will continue to come back. I will continue to come back because, again, we will have an innovation lab here in the city of Saginaw for Black Women in Artificial Intelligence. There will be one. But again, I am opposed to any registered drug facilities, any additional I ask that you call a moratorium. Because what happens when you get 100? Are you going to approve 100 for a city of 48,000 people? Do we want to be known as the city that has the most registered drug facilities? You are, it is important that we all understand that we're trying to bring more businesses in Saginaw. Right now, we have recycled dollars. But we want people from out of state. I know you guys have Amazon coming in, but we want other large corporations to come in. But they're going to have second thoughts if their businesses are right next to a registered drug facility. I had pause when I found out that there was going to be a registered drug facility across from the land that I own here in the city of Saginaw. It's going to be right across from Black Women in Artificial Intelligence Innovation Lab. How are we going to bring the greatest people and the greatest minds to this city when right across is a registered drug facility? Again, I know you're tired of hearing me, but I won't apologize for loving this city. Even if I'm not here, there are many of us who want to return. But we're questioning, what will we return to? So thank you guys so much for listening. And I am opposed to any registered drug facilities within the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case?
I am Charlene Washington, I live at 1405 Brown Street here in the city. And I to oppose any further approving registrations or licensing for additional marijuana drug facilities. Again, we need something different for our city. At one time, we had an East Genesee Corridor plan that was pushed back and pushed down because no one wanted to develop that plan. But in our hearts, we still wanted to develop our community. We still want a grocery store and we don't want these facilities anyplace in the city. We can't stop them. But there again, I say the same thing that the young lady just said. Are we going to approve more than these? What's the number, is there a number that we will stop at? Do we continue on as long as there's money and everybody's making the money? And sometimes when people, all money, she's right, all money is not good money. When the money comes to the city, how much are they really paying? How much of that money will improve our city? What will that money come, what will that money accomplish? Are our kids going to get a better education? We need more, we just need more than what we've been given. And we trust you, we voted for you, we elected you, some of, well, maybe we didn't, but still. We still need, we still need more for our city, period. East side, west side, it's still our city. We love our city, we want to see different, we want to see better. And we're asking you to please pray and ask the Lord to show you what to do for our city. We, I know the city can be better. I look, I drive down all over the city and it hurts my heart to see that we don't have anything. People are buying food from grocery store, I mean, from dollar stores because they don't have a ride to the grocery store on State Street or Meyer or wherever. And we can allow people to come to our city and not really pour back into the city again. The young man that we didn't, that just was approved, the first one, I'm sorry that he chose that for a business because it's not fair that you get 19 other people and then we're going to vote against him. Well, he did get approved, well, that's good for him, but it's not good for us. It's good for anyone who is approved, if that's what they want to do. But is that what we need for our city? Do you want growth for our city? Do you want to see something different than what we have? When I was here the last time, I asked, how many of you live on the east side? I live there by choice, don't have to be on the east side, but I choose to live among my people who I want to help people in this city. We want to grow, we want businesses to come into our city and we're not attracted at this point. You can talk to people all over, in different states, they'll tell you, who wants to live in Sag nasty? I hate the term Sag nasty, it's not Sag nasty. I hate that because we're not, and it gives us a really bad image. So why can't we improve our image with things that would draw people into our community and not things that? And I know CBD oil may help some people, I'm not negating any of that, it probably does. But I guarantee you, they're going to be selling more than CBD oil in those facilities. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this case? J 21-0093, special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2030 North Mason. Come to the podium, please state your name and address.
I'm Althea Sutton Dugan.
Pull the microphone down in front of your face, please.
I'm Althea Sutton Dugan. I've lived in Saginaw all my life. It's probably seniority over all of you. I know where Saginaw's been. I know where it is. And at the rate you're going right now, I can visualize where Saginaw is going. You people are supposed to be representatives of Saginaw, the people of Saginaw. It looks like all of you knew what you were looking for when you had your, getting your votes. Okay, but it looks like all of you forgot where you came from. Saginaw is not going to go up, it's going to go down. How much interest does he have in improvement of Saginaw? I'm ready to give your property up.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, yes, I can.
But you don't need to address him, please address the commission.
Well, excuse me, please.
That's all right.
Why don't you address us in the way we want to hear it? You know something, you people really put on a dead bling good act. Saginaw used to be General Motors. Now it looks like we're going into Drug City. I mean Drug City. You're sick because you don't give a damn. You are a disgrace. Where are we headed? Where are we headed? Saginaw way down here, excuse me, we're way down here. We're going to put Detroit to shame, Flint to shame, hey. Why don't they run it up north? Another state, but why Saginaw? I was raised here, I was born here, right over there on Sixth Street. You know that St. Francis home? Hey, that used to be a hospital, used to be St. Luke's. I've been here a long time. I've seen the city of Saginaw dirty as all get over there on the First Ward because that's where I lived. Okay, it's my time up, but you people got some time that you better get together.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. I now would like to entertain a motion on case J 21-0093.
Motion to approve case J 21-0093.
Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve case J 21-0093, to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2030 North Mason. Any comments or questions from the commission?
I have a question of staff. When this facility was originally before us in November, I recall, under public comment, there were a couple people who voiced their opposition to such a facility. I assume postcards have been sent out again on this particular one? What kind of feedback did you get?
Question. The Big Ugly Fish, the bar across the street, there was nothing from that as well? And, because he had approached me before, but nothing, okay. And he wasn't in opposition, just basically had questions.
What did you say?
Oh, I was talking about the owner of the Big Ugly Fish across the street. Had approached me and had questions about the facility before when it was approved, but there's been no response with the new cards that were sent out.
Any other questions from the commission?
I would just, a question to talk to the city. Could you explain, just for information, specifically, that's the difference between this board and city council? Because we're just going by the laws, we're planning, correct?
Sure, and I'm assuming you're just talking in terms of the marijuana ordinance and how everything came to be. Well, it actually goes one step above city council when in 2018, the citizens of the state of Michigan voted Prop 1 into effect and legalized recreational marijuana in the state. marijuana in the state. After that occurred, city council looked at the matter in depth to determine what their policy would be with regard to whether or not they would opt in and allow marijuana establishments within the city of Saginaw. City council is the policy-setting board for the city of Saginaw, and city council made stepping into recreational marijuana a discussion topic at two strategic planning sessions. They held a committee of the whole specifically with regard to whether or not the city should enter into an ordinance allowing for recreational establishments of providing, yet another opportunity for public comment. They, the ordinances got drafted. They get introduced at, well, first they get introduced at Planning Commission from the zoning aspect. They get discussed and approved here with a recommendation to go to city council. City council introduces the ordinances at one meeting. They get laid over for, in this case, 30 days because it involved a zoning amendment, and then at another meeting, city council approved those marijuana ordinances. So, it was, it was a long, multi-year process in which we evaluated all the laws as they came into being. We waited for administrative rules to get issued. We looked at other communities to see what was transpiring there, and ultimately, city council made the policy decision to allow for recreational establishments within the city of Saginaw. The Planning Commission's role is to review one component of an application for marijuana establishment. So, in simplest terms, there's kind of a four-step process. The, an application, an applicant would apply to the city clerk for a business license. That application gets reviewed to make sure that all of the components are in place, and they get issued a provisional license. The applicant then goes back to the state, who evaluates everything and makes sure that everything that's being done is not only in compliance with city regulations, but also in compliance with state law. The state will eventually issue, if everything falls in order, will issue their license. That applicant comes back, then provides that evidence to the city clerk, and a full business license then would get issued to that applicant. Part of that application process to the city clerk involves all applicants coming before this planning commission to get a special use permit. So, the planning commission reviews the site plan with regard to the development that is going to occur, make sure it checks off all the boxes with regard to the city's zoning ordinance, and approves or disapproves based on very specific criteria that's set forth in the zoning ordinance or state law.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Probably way more information than you were looking for.
I'm just saying, basically, this board has nothing to do with the laws.
I'm sorry?
It has nothing to do with the marijuana laws, so just complaining.
No, we're just here working within the city ordinance that was put in place by the city council. And during the year-long process of the city council trying to, to get their ordinance on the books, we only had one person come before the city council in opposition of the ordinance at that time, and we had been in the news, like the attorney had said, there had been quite well-known what the city was looking to do. And so, then the council has put it into place, and so the planning commission is, this is our job, to either approve or disapprove. And to go along with some of the past history, which you've given, back in 2008, 68% of the residents of the city of Saginaw wanted and voted for medical marijuana, but they didn't. The city council never took that up. In 2014, 60% of the residents of the city, city residents that live in the city of Saginaw changed the city charter, and you could actually carry an ounce of marijuana legally on you. It's in the city charter right now. You can still, it's still there. It's not been taken out. And also in 2018, 69% of the residents of the city of Saginaw said yes to recreational marijuana. And we know the demographics of our city, so we can kind of do the math and see the statistics of the people that wanted this here in your city. And I think eventually, I know it's probably low-hanging fruit for the current administration in Washington, DC. We have a lot of other things to take care of at the federal level, but I do believe that eventually, with enough states that have already opted in to recreational, that you'll see the government take this up. And I'm in favor of this because we all know that the war on drugs was devastating to this country. There was no war on drugs. We all know what that was for. But because the state of Michigan has now legalized marijuana, anybody that was in prison for the crimes that were committed back in that day, if it's legal now in the state of Michigan, the governor has put a lot of things into place last year in 2020 to expunge those records and get those people back out because they were locked up for no good reason. So, I understand this is a really sensitive topic, but I think, and I'm glad that everybody, out of respect for everybody that comes here to talk about it, I think what we're going to see is that when we finally see our facilities start to open, it's going to be like Bay City. I've talked to their commissioners. I've talked to their government, and they're not having any problems. So, I'm hoping I'm trying to alleviate some of the fear that we're hearing today as we look at these applications. And if anybody would like to talk to me afterwards, please feel free to pull me aside.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
I do have one quick comment. Please be aware that most of us who are on this commission are appointed. We are not elected.
Right.
So, it is our, we look at it as our public duty and our free time. However, if I was elected, I would ask him for, you know, a lot of money so I can pay off my student loans. But I appreciate all the comments that come to us from the public. Please know that we listen to what you're saying. We understand, we live in the city of Saginaw. We understand your concerns. These are also our concerns, but we are restricted to working within the law that has been given to us by the state. Okay? Please be mindful of that. All right. We are all willing to talk to you anytime you see us in the community to discuss some of these things. All right? Please don't look at it as just a board that's just sitting here rubber stamping things. We are very concerned, and we take your comments to heart, and we discuss those things. So, thank you.
If I could just comment again, the
Last comment.
I live on the east side of Saginaw, and I live right in the area of Genesee and Hoyt, and we do a lot there to bring back the city. I would like to address some of the other comments that were made here today. The last time the state paid out revenue incomes to the cities and municipalities that had these stores in place, it was each store received $24,000. So, I'm very hopeful, in the position that I sit in this city, that I'd like to see some of that money actually go back into the communities, and hopefully on the east side, where we really need a lot of help, where we need rec centers and different things for our kids to do, to start programs up. I think this might be one of the ways we can do that. I know right now, we're sitting a lot of ARPA funds, and we're still discussing all of that in the city. But there was comments about a grocery store made more than one time. I've actually talked to, and I'm not going to say the grocery chains and different things, but still working on it and trying to get those folks to look at, because we know that we lost all that here. I mean, the last one was over by my house on Genesee Street. So, I too, I hear what you're saying. I'm hoping that I'm making a difference, but my voice today, and again, always open for a conversation, just to talk about things that are going on in the city. And to the lady that came and spoke, there are a lot of things going on under the hood in Saginaw that are really good things that are happening and a lot of programs right now, that young folks are working with the land bank and trying to get properties back on the tax rolls and renovated. It's taken a long time for Saginaw to go where we went. GM pulled out. 2008 hit. We got hit hard, but I believe that we're on the way back up with everything that I know, that I'm involved with in the city of Saginaw, and I'm very optimistic that we're going to have a city that we can love, but not a city that we always had. It's going to be a new Saginaw with a lot of other opportunity besides recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I call a question?
It has been moved and seconded to approve case J21-0093 to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 2030 North Mason. Madam Secretary, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brayley.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostache.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is old business.
I've got, I've got something I want to talk about.
What's this?
Oh, I thought that was something I was supposed to read. In the past, oh, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter either one.
Yeah, no, let's quote the master plan.
Okay, we have a master plan status update.
Yes. So, here is where we are today. As you all know, we've established a subcommittee to help work on furthering our master plan process. Printed copies have been provided by, to the subcommittee, and they've been pushing them out on their networks. The surveys themselves have QR codes, and they have internet address for people to be able to either fill them out on the computer or fill out the paper copy. We have submitted those to various, or they've been being pushed at various activities like Friday Night Live, the African Cultural Festival, and then Thursday, the Small Business Expo. We have a survey blitz that we do out in the parking lot on Fridays when people come into city hall. We had one August 20th, and we have another one scheduled for this Friday. We have set an alert on the city's website. It's included in the city newsletter. We've been pushing it out on our Facebook page and social media, and the flyers and the surveys have been printed out throughout the city hall. We've met twice now with the neighborhood associations in June and August, and we followed up with emails to the leaders to get the word out. And then, the next thing we're going to be doing is holding individual group stakeholder meetings beginning this Friday, August 27th, and then Thursday, September 2nd. And so, that's kind of where we are at this point. I've checked to see how many surveys have been taken so far, and we have 461 so far taken. The deadline is September 1st for that.
Okay, so we're doing our best to get to that 1,200 number?
Doing our best.
Okay.
Another thing, once we are done with all of the surveys, collect all of the data, and then the stakeholder meetings, we're going to have a meeting to invite all of the development boards, so the Planning Commission, the Historic District Commission, the Riverfront Commission, and the Downtown Development Authority, so we can share all of the information that we've gotten with you guys, some of the maps that have been created based off of comments and also studies. We don't have the date for that yet, but it'll be in the week of September 20th, so we'll let you know when we do get that date. It'll probably be, you know, two, two and a half, three hours. It's a long time. Come when you can. There's going to be a lot to discuss, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
We have audience for the people. We need the survey. We've, I've heard everything that they've said. It actually can go on some paper. So, I know somebody on the committee. I know some people, I know some of us got them forms to where this, these young people can fill out the master plan and the ARPA thing to tell us what they'd like to see done.
Down on the first floor, when you guys leave on the first floor, there's a sandwich board. There's QR code on that, the survey.
I will make sure y'all get them. Trust me, I got all them forms in my car.
And there's forms downstairs. There's forms downstairs, too, so they can just pick one up.
Right.
It's empty downstairs.
It's what? Empty?
Master plan is empty.
Oh, okay.
So, sorry.
So, mine's just not empty. I got some in my car.
Yeah.
Okay.
But those are the same surveys we handed out at the neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I guess.
Well, that's good. People are taking.
And I will mention the 461s only, the online. We haven't counted any of the paper ones yet that are being, that some of you guys may have from our committee and in the box enclosures.
Yeah. Madam Chair, for me.
The paper copies.
Paper copies.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now, I have to turn my papers in.
Madam Chair, I've got a comment, too. To go along with this, too, they're putting on a event here on Friday where you can actually come to city hall. So, folks that are watching at home, you can come to city hall on Friday. I can't remember the time.
We'll be here from 9:00 to 4:00.
Thank you.
Those who can make it, we will be here from 9:00 to 4:00.
Thank you, and I'll be there from
Fill them out. This is one we haven't filled out.
Yeah, I'll be there from 12:00 to 2:00. Thank you.
That's all I have. Other than I gave you a handout from FEMA, they're having an open house September 28th to discuss floodplain areas for the city.
You also have a handout for the city's strategic planning.
Yeah.
September 17th.
It's the 17th. So, is this, Madam Chair, is this going to be on our webpage for others to see as well? Or is this just a internal thing with the FEMA?
It's open for the public.
Okay. I suggest we give a Vicki.
Yes, she actually is aware of that, yeah. And it's virtual, it's not.
Right.
Question for Bob. The link that you gave me to the transportation and parking study, that was excellent. I don't know if anybody else could forward that on to the rest of the commissioners?
Certainly, yeah.
Do you have, I know you were doing the housing part of the study, too. Do you know if there was a link to that, or?
Yeah, I can provide that as well.
Awesome, because that way, we can start to look at that prior to. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And thanks for getting that. Haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I will.
Any other old business?
I do. Have you done with the master plan?
Uh, yes.
Okay. There was something that was brought up a while ago. I had talked about with our city ordinance for marijuana, where the actual, what we call the buffer or the setback. What I'm talking about is marijuana facilities cannot be within 500 feet of each other. They cannot be within 1,000 feet of the school, and that's all established at the time that the business license is put into place. So, they'd have to go to the city clerk's office, get their license. But I think part of the conversation we were having at the time was to alleviate some of these facilities getting too many special use permits by each other as if we developed that buffer zone a little bit earlier. And I still believe that at the time of the special use permit that was just approved today, I think that's the appropriate spot where we can start to enact that buffer so that we don't have too many permits being approved. Another in that as well is because if the permits are not approved, then they don't go to engineering. Our staff isn't working on things because then down the road, then we have to go for a variance, and that's another thing I'd like to talk to about some of the variances that go to the zoning board of appeals because what if my colleague here decides to put a dispensary on one block, gets a special use permit, I go to the next block, and I get my special use permit, and he gets a variance, and then I get a variance? Are we both guaranteed our license in the end? That was a new thought process that came through my head. So, I'd like to open that up for discussion if anybody has any input on that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct me if I'm wrong. That would have to go back in front of council to be redirected, or is it just a discussion that we're seeing?
For any amendments to a county ordinance.
For any amendment, it has to go back in front of council.
Come from council table, correct.
Right. So, your question to us is, do we want to talk about it? Well, we did talk about it.
With?
Earlier.
Right.
Where it was re, I think shortly after we did it, we started seeing clashes, and then it was a question at that point. And then it was a question at that point, no, we're not gonna do everything right, okay? We're not. And we, I'm not looking for every, all of the ones that applied to open up either. But it's like, at this point in the game, we don't know really what is gonna be what. And I know that we don't want to just wait and have it dropped in our lap, but you're asking us to go back, re-look at it, or revisit, and redo something that you gotta go back and redo all of it over, if you're gonna redo it.
I don't know if we'd have to redo the whole thing, I think we would just make the changes and then grandfather everybody else in. There's only two.
I don't think you can grandfather, it would be moving forward.
It would.
Well, because everybody has taken action and made reliance on the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, those thanks for that clarity.
I, so, right now, the process for members of the commission who, just for clarification, the ordinance, zoning ordinance creates buffer zones from certain sensitive uses and contains a buffer zone that prohibits one marijuana establishment being located within 500 feet of another marijuana establishment. With an allowance that an applicant can seek a variance from that setback requirement. As the ordinance is currently written, that setback is established upon licensure. So on the books, nobody is technically, there are no current licensed marijuana establishments, so we just know hypothetical buffers at this point. That said, we did have one applicant go before the Board of Appeals on zoning last month? Two months ago? And, you know, to, to be granted a variance, you have to show undue hardship. They were able to make their case and the Board of Appeals on zoning granted that variance for them prior to them making their build out and getting full licensure, because the argument was that they would have to expend large amounts of money and then go seek the variance.
Yeah, I watched that zoning.
The, the process worked, essentially.
Okay. I just was thinking that it could deter, which for part of our audiences watching today, too, is that that might be something that they, would interest them, because it could deter the development in the city if things were getting too close to one another. Yeah.
And I will say, and, and staff has certainly said numerous times, everybody who comes in with an application for, whether they go for a special use permit first, or go for a provisional license with the city clerk first, everyone is put on notice of other potential marijuana establishments that might be located within that 500-foot buffer zone that have already come before them and started the process. So any subsequent applicants are going in with their eyes wide open as to what the situation may be.
Okay. I will never bring this up again, but I did want to bring it up one more time, because it's been kind of new. Just wanted to get some more clarity on that.
I have something. Um, I think today was very enlightening about where we are in the process of approving or not approving site plans for marijuana. And with that, I think that we need to reconsider the discussion of the motion that was, with regards to the approval of case number 21-0085, special use permit for marijuana establishment at 1724 East Genesee. I think that we...
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion on the floor to reconsider the July 27, 2021, motion regarding the approval of case J-21-0085, special use permit for marijuana establishment at 1724 East Genesee. At that time, the commission denied that special use permit. Discussion?
And just for clarification, I want to make sure that Commissioner Jones had voted in opposition to that.
I did vote in opposition.
Okay, that was the prevailing side, so I just wanted to make sure that a proper party made the motion to reconsider.
But I think that what was discussed today and what was outlined, not only to the community, but also to members of the commission, that it's important that we need to revisit this and discuss it and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do based on the ordinance that was set up, so.
If I may?
Yes.
Chair. This is the same situation that we had on Court Street, where we had Yuma Way and Great Lakes National Remedies. Where, yeah, where it was the same situation where the special use should have been approved. I am holding a letter here, too, from the gentleman that owns that property, and he did state in the letter, too, that he was looking to employ 15 full-time employees and also 10 part-time. And also, these facilities, they do pay above, way above minimum wage. These jobs are $20 an hour. And he's also looking to put money back into the community and around, let me see some of the things he said here. This is another thing that came up with the Skymint facility, which is over on...
Harrison.
Harrison, thank you. And they are actually going to, because there was some concerns with the ministry that was a few blocks down the road, and they also had stated that they would be working with folks in the neighborhood, so, and we heard that here today as well. So I just want to make that on the record. And let me see. Okay, and he's also, excuse me, and he's also saying, I wanted to quote something else from this letter here, too. Prior to the business that he looked at here, he had a liquor store. And part of his decision for wanting to open a dispensary or have a tenant who would open a dispensary there was the key factor, that this tenant said that they would be putting some of the monies and things back into the community and its surrounding area. Sometimes this doesn't pick up on how it's community and surrounding area. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Just a quick question, Chair. So this person meets all the criteria at this site. It was denied previously, but he meets all the criteria at the site that we would look at and say, okay, we should approve this. Okay, just making, make sure I understood, because I, I was not at that meeting, I missed that, apologize. Correct.
I wonder if it would help if someone would read that letter? You know, I'm looking at you, Bob.
My name is Scott Patrice, maybe? I'm not sure, apologize. I am the owner of the building located at 1724 East Genesee, Saginaw, Michigan. I'm writing to you because my building above was turned down recently by city council for a special use permit to establish a legal marijuana business. My family and I have lived in Saginaw County since 1976, went to Saginaw County Public School, and graduated with honors from S V S U. Throughout my journey, I have always tried to give back to the Saginaw community. Growing up, I was volunteering at Saginaw Hospital and donating money and goods to local churches. I've owned this building, which is located at 1724 East Genesee, for many years as a resident there. However, each, I mean, early in this year, I was approached by a company to lease the building and develop the site into a legal dispensary. I only agreed after leasing company, the leasing company promised to invest in Saginaw community by creating more than 15 employment, full-time opportunities, plus an additional 10 part-time employment opportunities that would pay up to $20 an hour for each employee, in addition to making several donations from Saginaw schools and churches throughout the duration of the lease. Therefore, this sounded like a win-win situation, since I was going to get a good tenant that would also enable me to pay for the building taxes, main, maintenance, roof repairs, and help me pay for two young daughters' education and other needs. All while the community would also benefit from the new job donations and taxes levied by the state and the city. In short, the building was going to be converted from current liquor store, food takeout, into a legal cannabis business. So after I signed the lease with the company, I decided to close the liquor store business that was already there. I was shocked, however, to learn that the application for the cannabis business for my building was turned down by the city planning commission last week. Troubling thing is that my building meets all the criteria that the city ordinance requires for this type of business. The building has ample parking and none of the residents that live in the immediate vicinity in the building, within 300 feet, has stated in the city ordinance, objected to the site application. In fact, before the hearing, the city had sent postcard letters to everyone that lives in the immediate vicinity of the building to let them know about the plan of converting the building into a legal dispensary. And by the city's own admission, during the hearing process in this matter, none of those receiving these notification postcards objected to the plan. No objection. The object, the objection came from two people, and the first objection came from a lady that lives across the bridge and in the other side of the city, which is over two miles away from my building, according to the address she gave from her residence. The second objection came from a lady that claims that she is a staff member at a church, which is over half a mile away from my building, and her residence is over one mile also. As you can see, neither of these two individuals live or work in the immediate vicinity of the building. None of them meet the criteria of the city ordinance to voice a valid objection to cause the site not be approved. This according to what the city ordinance calls for. Again, the city has sent notice to all residents and businesses that are within 300 feet of the site, as is required by the city ordinance, and none of them objected to this site becoming a legal dispensary. In fact, just two weeks before my building was presented to the council, there was another building at the corner of Remington and East Genesee, at 1871 East Genesee Avenue, which was approved for the same permit, and the site is currently a car dealership which offers services that locals are in immediate need for. Yet despite that, city council voted to approve the site, despite it being the only car lot we have in the area. Prior to that, a building which was a cellular phone store at 910 East Genesee Avenue, is less than 1,000 feet from Delta College campus in downtown Saginaw, and less than 200 feet from a church, was also approved to become a legal dispensary by the city council. My building has none of the above issues. It is freestanding building secluded with ample parking. Furthermore, those two ladies who voiced their objections cited that the area is depressed, but the building at the corner of Remington and East Genesee is in that same depressed area and is currently used as a car lot, a service that is urgently needed by the Saginaw residents, yet it was approved for a dispensary. Aside from all of this, we all know that a decent part of the city is in that depressed area, but there are new businesses being established to change that. A legal dispensary that would close, that would close a current liquor store and create over 20 good-paying jobs and pay lots of taxes, would help lift and improve those depressed areas. We cannot continue to live in the past. Instead, we must learn to embrace an opportunity that would approve the chance of young people getting good-paying jobs. I'm also aware that there is a pending application for a building next to mine, which is coming up for a hearing in front of the board. It's my position to let you know that that site, or any other site near my building, or in the same street, is approved for the same purpose of becoming a dispensary. Then I would have to seek the advice of legal attorney to pursue this matter in court and seek damages I have incurred from having my building remain unimproved. Since the continued court decisions, council decisions to disapprove my building would constitute an obvious unfairness and bias toward me. Since I am also a person of minority group, I plan to contact minority organization and the area Chamber of Commerce to investigate this matter for me. However, in lieu of that, at this point, I would ask that city planning commission reconsider their decision and approve my building for legal dispensary, or offer an appeal that would lead to an approval. Otherwise, I'm stuck with an empty building, which I am required to keep secure, maintain, and pay property tax and insurance. On a personal level, I'm 49 years old, I have suffered from severe back pain and even worse pain in my feet due to chronic plantar fasciitis. Fasciitis, resulting from years of standing on my feet for many hours a day while working to support my family. I do not have a government job that pays me nice salary or pension. Whatever rent I was going to get from this building was going to help provide for me, my two daughters, ages four and five, my wife, myself, and my disabled mom. I also plan to give part of the rent to the local churches and youth development activities. In short, your decision not to approve the building for this use has created a tremendous hardship for myself, my family, and others in the area, who were going to benefit from this new employment opportunities. This indeed was going to create very nice employment opportunities for the young people that live in the area. We are all aware that there are not many great employment opportunities within the city parameters. Therefore, as a city, unless we learn to adapt, reinvent, and follow the trend, we will be left behind. We should learn to encourage investors to invest in our city and create job opportunities, especially if they provide good-paying jobs for the locals. Currently, our city is full of vacant and debilitated buildings, please do not make my building become another one of them, too. For all of these above reasons, I ask my dear, respected city planning commission members and mayor to reverse their decision and approve my building for the legal permit of cannabis business. I want to thank each one of you for taking the time to read and consider what I have stated in my letter. I also want to thank each one of you for everything that you do for our Saginaw community. I look forward to hearing from you soon to resolve this very dear matter. Very respectfully, Scott Patrice.
Thank you. Any other comments? So we have a motion on the floor to reconsider the special use permit for case J-21-0085 at 1724 East Genesee.
And just for clarification, you're voting on the motion to reconsider?
Mm-hmm.
Then the motion to approve comes back before, so it's two separate votes?
Yes. All in favor of reconsidering this special use permit?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. I now ask for a motion for case J-21-0085.
Motion to approve case...
The, the motion's already back.
So it's back on the floor, so I'll have to... Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we just brought it back to the floor, back to the table. Thank you.
So that motion is back on the table. It is the, and I don't have the dates in front of me, but it's the motion to approve...
July 27th, yes.
The case, the July 27th decision with regard to 1724 East Genesee.
Does it matter that the Fred Zworko made the initial motion? And he's not here? Or does it matter?
No, it, just the motion to reconsider needs to be brought by an individual who voted on the majority side of the decision, so someone who voted against the original plan.
Okay.
So motions on the floor for approval of case J-21-0085, special use permit for marijuana establishment at 1724 East Genesee. Any questions?
I have a question. I wasn't there. I wasn't at this meeting. So can I? I don't think I should vote on this one. I don't hear, know that much about this.
I, I think you can, because it's being treated as a new motion before.
Okay. Any other questions? Madam Secretary, will you take a roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Brayley.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
No.
Commissioner Ostache.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Any other old business? The next item on our agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for your time.